This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. Called the meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees to order on this Tuesday, November 19, 2019. First item on the agenda for today's meeting is the consent agenda. Entertaining motion to approve the consent agenda?
So long.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Malibu. Have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, are those in favor of your motion to approve the consent agenda? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public with comments. Seeing and hearing no one that's here for that purpose, move on to the next item on the agenda. Reports and communications. Have any things that you're aware of from the friends?
I can report some things from their meeting last week. So they are going to begin looking at their bylaws. So one of their members is an attorney, so he's taking a look at their bylaws for potential updates. And then in a recent meeting, the friends approved their investment policy. So with that approved, come the start of the year, they're going to start looking at doing an RFP to evaluate whether or not they can do better with their investment services. Under for that. They also approved their 990 tax return for 2018 and approved up to $5,000 to cover the cost of an artist visit. So kind of similar to Gambrette coming as an illustrator. And they also approved two new members. So the two new members up there. Laura, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Did you just say that we approved Gambrette?
No, I said similar to Gambrette.
Okay, because I was like, that's not who we approved. And I would provide the name, but I can't remember it.
Leywin.
Thank you.
What was it?
Leywin.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving to committee reports. Nick from finance?
Just looking at the budget report, we're a third of the way through the year and expenses are running right about on par. So nothing looks unusual to me.
Thank you, Tom. Personnel? Nope. The rest moved down. Advocacy. Malibu.
Oh, I had this to share with you all. And I was kind of looking around on the ALA listserv and things like that, ALA American Library Association listserv and things like that, and kind of doing some Googling and all that. And was trying to see, you know, you have those vanity plates, like how you have for organizations, museums and things like that. And vanity plates for libraries don't exist in our state. And of course, it will not be DPL, it will be, you know, just DPL, but it will be public libraries. So, you know, so it will be in conjunction with the State Library of Iowa. And I believe, I'm not sure on that, so please don't quote me on that, but a certain percentage, if we buy the plate, goes to the public library. Public libraries, probably the association of the state of public library. So I kind of got in touch with IDOT to check, you know, what they do. And they haven't given me a nice clear cut answer, but the rough answer is we need 250 people to sign up to get this plate, you know. I mean, of course, the design and all that comes in later. Yes, don't you think we can? And so when I put this up on ALA listserv to see who all in the United States does a library vanity plate, and I found New York, Nevada, Kentucky, and Louisiana, they do vanity plates for libraries per se. And many of them do for museums, like, you know, the reason I think of museums, it's IMLS, International Museum and Library, but not libraries. So I thought of just bringing it up to share it with you all. And if it is okay for me to continue the conversation with IDOT to see, hey, guys, could we do this? And then I'll check with them what entails when it comes to having a picture, you know, any picture. I don't know, you know, what, how it goes, so I could answer. So that was one that I wanted to share. Rueven Food Bank, Diana, who is the person who got in touch with us and did the two at Fairmont, she was really happy, like, you know, with that we gave her the place and she got back in saying that, of course, it's winter, so they cannot do it outside anymore. And, you know, then she didn't say that she's looking for an internal space at, because I mean, she didn't say it with me, but she said, we'll surely look out for, if it is okay, to get back in touch and have spring and summer next year to be a location like our Fairmont libraries. I said, I'll share that. Another thing that I thought was, we've already started a lovely relationship with Rueven Food Bank and we've done a few of the backpack packings and things like that. They do have a few new dates I saw that they have come up with on the website. So I thought I would give them and share with you all, maybe an email to all of you, you know, when we share that. Because it's already a lovely relationship between all of us and it's mutually beneficial for us as well as them, is what I felt. And lastly, I just wanted to say, when it's spring or summer, I think we need to have a new photo of all of us for our website, and I think you're not doing it for the first one, so maybe, you know, that was just something that I wanted to bring into attention.
Good idea. We were talking about that before. It just kind of.
Yeah. Thank you. That was all.
Okay. Thank you, Malibu. Okay. Director Guevarde?
Amy? Okay. So to update just a little bit in terms of the city budget process, so I noted in my report that Steve sent a request to city administrator and the finance director as well as Marion to share with her fellow council members, requesting that additional $83,000 that we would need in order to be open for meetings a week at each branch. So it would extend our hours till eight o'clock Monday through Thursday. And so we had our first meeting with kind of the city's budget team, their staff team on Friday, and they didn't say this is just absolutely impossible based on budget. So that, to me, is, you know, good news at any rate, and they're going to be working to verify those budget amounts with us. They want to have their person, you know, go through and look at our figures on that. So. And then for CIP requests, if you remember, so at the last meeting, you all approved what our requests were and it went out like five years to fiscal 2026. And so as the staff has been looking at all of those the past couple of weeks, there's always shifting in terms of budget year and sometimes things drop off completely. The Fairmont carpet ended up being moved to fiscal '25 in order to, you know, balance things out in fiscal '23. So that would mean that we would tackle carpet in both branches the same fiscal year. So that would be exciting. Perfect, perfect, perfect.
Exciting stuff.
And then the Eastern Drainage Improvements, that was a small project, about $35,000. That was completely taken out. And for a lot of those really small projects, there, I think the assumption is, is that at some point in time, they'll find the funding someplace else and they're leaving the bigger projects. So overall, I think we did pretty well in, you know, in general obligation bonds. They ended up having to cut, you know, like $10 million out of requested projects for this upcoming fiscal year or so. And the same, you know, goes out, there's always much more need and many more projects that are put forward than what there's funding for. So I think overall, we did pretty well with that. And then that will go to council, Marion, her fellow council members, who'll have the final approval on that. The other thing I wanted to let you know is, so for the capital campaign, so there were just kind of general approval of the naming opportunities as part of the capital campaign. And I wanted to let you know that as of right now, the RDA, the Regional Development Authority, has requested, so based on their level of giving, they had some options available to them. And they're looking to have the large meeting room just across the hall here become the RDA meeting room at some point in time. And then the Children's Base, the Scott County Regional Authority would like to have their logo on that when we do the renovations. So that's where we are with those naming opportunities at this point. And I think that's it. And that's it. Has anyone else have questions about anything else?
Okay. Council hands on.
Well, we are, you know, into the budget and goal setting as, you know, as been discussed before. We will have, there will be budget meetings in January again where we look at the operating and the CIP. I think there may be four Saturdays this year. They're open to the public, they're not there for public comment, but they're casual meetings. We sit around the table and there's lots of breaks and people, you know, we talk to people and sometimes someone might be asked, a director might be asked to talk about something and stuff like that. So they're just scintillating, like amazingly wonderful. It's like a Christmas.
Seems so like the holiday.
So anyway, but, you know, it's kind of a way for, you know, the new council and mayor, which will have new people. So that's really taken up a lot of time right now. I would, you know, one thing, you know, being your liaison here and learning about all the stuff that the library does, I don't, and I know that the meeting that we had, and I don't know if the new mayor will continue those meetings with, you know, boards and commissions or not, as, you know, as happened under Cliffs' watch. But I would recommend maybe reaching out to the new council members and just sitting down with them and just letting them know what, you know, what this library system does and all the things that's involved in, because I think that people, I don't think they understand. And I think it would be interesting before they get, everything gets underway and they're busy, 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 it might be something that I would certainly recommend and certainly I think you can do that. I don't think there's any reason why you can't, so.
Are you thinking of that as like, we as a group would reach out to them and then they would all come or like individually would contact them?
Individually. Really? I mean, that's what I, you know, I would say, hey, come, we'd love to sit, maybe Amy and a couple of board members, not, you know, maybe not have the whole board or try to do it that way, but have it in a, you know, just a friendly setting. Because I, you know, I don't, they may use it all the time and you don't know it, but they, there are things that people don't know that you're involved with. And I think the scope is something that is very important for people to understand, that it's much more than, you know, renting out books and videotapes or CDs or whatever it is people run out these days, you know, it's a much, the whole social aspect of it, I think is, I think they should know about it. So, and they probably don't understand the relationship between the library and the legal relationship between the library and the city and the sort of the state, you know, those are all interesting things. And we don't have those commission meetings, again, and I don't know whether we will, but it'll be a while and this would be a way to get some people that, you know, you haven't had exposure to maybe.
Do they have, when will they be assigned, the new, when will they be assigned a city email? Or do we have, or do you have other ways to get?
I have other ways to get. I have my ways. I've already been reaching out. Two have had their census meetings already. Oh, we're working on the census. So I can, you know, I can.
So you can share that with them, set up a little bit more easily?
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, it probably is never too early to get your ore in, because, you know, I know that when you come in, it's just like, oh, and I agree up with a bunch of stuff, so early is good. Anyway, just my suggestion. So, in any case, that's really all I have to say.
Okay. So moving on to new business, we have a discussion of the library non-discrimination harassment and harassment policy. The paper's on the back.
On the back.
Got it.
Well, so, yep, the, like, that first paragraph needs some reworking, especially that last sentence is kind of ungracefully attached there at the end, so we know that there's some wording there to clean up. That last sentence is just kind of.
You know, it would seem that you could, if you want to word spin this, you could say, the second to the last paragraph, you could say, such as ability and performance which is free of discriminatory, inappropriate, inappropriate, comma, disrespectful conduct or communication and/or harassment. Just stick that in there and it would shorten it up a bit.
So I'm reading this quickly, but the process, because it says discrimination harassment can occur between library patrons, employees or library patrons and what, okay, so the process for dealing with that is going to be the same, like, there isn't a separate thing for employees? Like, if they had a discrimination claim or concern, wouldn't that be, isn't that dealt with differently than if it's between patrons?
But this is, so this is the policy document as opposed to the procedure document? So, yeah, so you're absolutely right, there, there is a different.
Everyone else had that cross.
Got it. And I think the process information is in the union contract and the.
And the personnel manual.
For staff.
Can it, it would say to me that you're different, I mean, this is just ordering, wouldn't definition go first?
Sure.
You've just talked about discrimination and harassment. Wouldn't definition of harassment be the first thing in the bullet points? Like, okay, this is what we're talking about, we're talking about harassment and then equal up and then, it seems like it comes, maybe it should be the first thing, because you're talking, the definition of what you're talking about? I just might read.
You can make those changes and then bring it forward for approval at the December meeting? Okay?
Anything else? Next item is, new business item is discussion of the 2020 strategic plan implementation.
So this is the third year of the strategic plan. And this is, so this would be the last year of the implementation plan. So every year that we've been working on this, there's been an implementation plan for each year that we've asked the trustees to perform. This is, this is down to 14 pages from the 22 to 14 parts. So what that shows is that we've made a lot of progress and we've really worked through a lot of things. And I don't expect everybody to read it right now. So the, some of the bigger changes this year and some of the things we're working on this year would really be like, so in terms of programs, we've really worked to make sure that our, the programming that we're offering is more inclusive and we're reaching out to more diverse communities in the area. So we've done that for a couple of years. So now we want to take a look at, was that successful? And, you know, what other things might we need to do moving forward? And, but how do we institutionalize that? And how do we make sure that going forward, a strategic plan shouldn't be, you know, what becomes your ongoing standard operating procedures? So how do we turn that into our standard procedures and then institutionalize those things that we want to continue to do? So that's a lot of what we're going to be taking a look at this year. The, and then, so that would be the things that you're seeing in red. And then there are a few things in yellow that I think we were looking at. Do those things stay in? Do they need to be changed? One of those is the trustee engagement piece. And so I don't know if there's things, Malibu, with your group, that we want to change in that particular tactic. So that one's on page four. But the red are kind of some, some things we added in that were not part of the original implementation plan, the big three-year plan that was written. So you'll notice that we want to take a look at bubble tea, you know, has that been a good partnership for us? Sometimes they're not open and we get complaints about that.
I don't know, it just goes on and on. We try so hard.
You know, so is it, do we want to take a look at that and say, you know, well, we just want to do something else, you know, instead of having a cafe there? But a lot of, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Amy. I just wondered, well, what's their explanation for that? Like, when we, don't we follow up?
It's usually staffing. I mean, they don't, they don't have staff.
Okay, owner, you'll need to look at and staff.
Yeah. So, but if they're an independent contractor, they lease, so we really don't have any control over how they operate their business. As long, right.
Yeah, so that wasn't in their contract that they needed to be open?
So, I mean, one generally assumes that a business wants to be open. I mean, so, yeah, yeah.
Hours a little. Seems like it's what we have to do. The college operators have like, here's 14 writers that you have to face this day.
So I think it's worth taking a look at that particular piece. So you'll see some other things that are changing, some changes there on page six, for example, where it says implement phase two of the new Quad City Open Network Hub. That originally talked about, you know, looking at 211 service, or information referral service in the Quad Cities and now that's become something else. So it's still information referral, but it's now really specifically working with the Quad City Open Network on this information referral hub. So we made some of those changes to kind of update where we were on that. So if for next time, if folks could take a look at that, read through, see if you have any particular questions and concerns, and we would like to be able to have the trustees approve that again in December so we can present it to staff, kind of as the work plan for the year when we do January all-staff training.
What's the status of, because, I mean, I know it's in yellow, but develop a staff survey?
So that's, so that's been in there a number of, a number of times. And so we've done a variety of different things in terms of that survey. And I know that the trustees had asked that we do that again. So I think we were looking at, does that need different wording or is it something we've been continuing to do? So does that kind of drop off as standard procedure? And do we, again, turn that into something where this is something we do every year, every other year and write that into our general procedures?
And that's different than the questionnaires that go out about your performance and the direct, the department head's performance? Is that different than that?
Yes. Yeah, so that's, yeah, because that's peer review.
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify.
Yeah.
What was the reason for this survey given? Or why was that a goal?
It was just to see how staff felt about, you know, internal communications and how were we doing communicating things to them, staff engagement, things like that.
Well, I think there were, you know, some concerns that were raised from this other type of surveying that goes on, that, you know, people having questions about communication. So I think that was why we thought it would be a good idea to get more information about that. Are these like two or three outliers that say this? Is it everybody? I mean, I don't know. So that, I think that was.
So what is the questions of the month and as people, things people are asking?
So that's a survey that we send out to staff.
Oh, okay.
Every month. And it's usually, you know, to get participation, we've kind of found like, you know, one simple easy question is, you know.
Do you report out what people say? Do they get any feedback to, here's kind of what people were thinking about the last month's question?
Do they get the results?
Yeah.
I think it depends on the question we're asking, but Jennifer says that.
Oh, okay.
We were talking about the bubble tea. At last, this weekend, went to Easton, and kidding not, there was no place to park, frozen party. And, you know, we were drinking, drinking, and there were double parking, staff area, double parking, people on the thing and all that. So I said, okay, we'll come later, we just have to return books. And the first thing, when we mentioned, when we were talking about bubble tea and things like that, first thing my family mentioned was, he could have given out specials to get people inside. Because there's nobody there. But there were tons of people. Yes, there were. There were tons of people overflowing the parking lot like crazy, you know, so, I mean, just a thought, like, I didn't say, my family, I mean, why did you have specials? I don't know.
Were there people in bubble tea that you saw?
No.
Came from a party.
Tons of, tons of people, tons of people, no area to park.
So what I'm hearing you say, Sylvia, is that we need, you would like us to see, to keep this in and work on the wording in terms of that staff engagement survey?
Oh, I think it's, I mean, I have no information that it's not still important, but I don't, I don't know. It seems like it's still a, I mean, it's always, it's always good.
Oh, and what I'm not saying that we don't intend to do it. What I was saying was that, so we've done it for the past couple of years in a variety of different ways, because this isn't the first time this has been on here. So is it time to have it drop off the implementation plan and be part, be part of what we do just because it's part of what we do?
Yeah, yeah.
Just kind of like some of the program we've done and some of the other kinds of things and like the, some of the, you know, removing of barriers in terms of identifying pre-juvenile materials and things like that. So to take a look at those things and then just say, okay, this is what we do from now on.
Well, what have you learned from it? I mean, is it useful to you? To you, meaning you, you in the background? I mean, are you finding that it's, it's giving you information that you wouldn't have otherwise gotten?
You know, I think some of it, some of it is and some of it isn't, because, you know, because we can't make it a requirement and keep it anonymous. And staff wants to be anonymous, but if we require so that we get a full perspective and we get everyone's ideas, then we can't keep it anonymous. And when it's, when it's not a requirement, then we tend to just, you know, get a couple of staff members who are mad about whatever particular issue that is.
So is that your way of saying, no, it's really not possible?
So I think, what I would like to do would be to come up with the, I don't know what the method is, I mean, maybe there's some magic method we haven't come up with yet.
Well, people do focus groups in their organizations. And then the person who's doing them, I mean, someone hired from outside the organization does a report back. And obviously, they're meeting every single staff person, like, that is a requirement that everybody come, then the report back is a more general sense, not just these, because we've also seen, I mean, we, you know, the things that they write about you and the, it's like, some people are really not happy. But what is that? But what does that mean? Does it mean everyone's? No, it doesn't mean that. But we, you know, how do we gauge that? And I guess like what have you done to change your own behaviors as a result of this? Like, is it really useful? Because we shouldn't be doing, I mean, we shouldn't be doing it if we're not doing something as a result of doing it and the staff knows, oh, here's what they're doing as a result of this. Otherwise, their investment in doing it is going to be really small.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, so I don't, I don't know.
Well, it's something that if somebody brings up that is like, well, yeah, yeah, we can change that and we should change that, then we go ahead and we do that. So I'm not saying it's completely, you know, not worth it. And sometimes that lets us know where, where there's confusion, you know, in a message or that, you know, there's a rumor going around, you know, or, you know, something for whatever reason went viral and it really doesn't have any, you know, too much basis in reality. And that we can.
So it's getting thrown that way.
So sometimes that is, but you know, actually, I mean, so maybe there's something we want to do in terms of strategic plan and maybe, you know, an outside person doing focus groups with staffs for a strategic plan that which we have to do this year anyhow would be a way to change that up a little bit, you know.
Yeah, not an every year thing necessarily. But, you know, even to get a baseline would be.
Yeah, I think even if nobody had ever responded, it still gives an opportunity that at one time that somebody might want to, they could. And as far as having it on as implementation, if it's something that's already in the fabric of what the library does, I think you probably implemented it.
There are a few, I mean, there are a few things on here. Like I said, there are fewer things on here, but some of these are potentially big things. So strategy one, just right here on the front page. So if we do receive the funding from the city to change those hours and extend those hours, the hiring piece, as Jennifer tells me, is really not a big deal. It's going to have a huge ripple impact through the staff, which will be a big deal and because people are going to get schedules changed. So, yeah, so that will be, you know, so that will be, just that one thing will be a big thing to work through. And the other big thing on here are the renovations here at Main. So we would intend to start those sometime late in 2020. So that would be another big thing happening this year. And then, as I said, we need to have a new strategic plan developed by the end of 2020. That's a big thing. And then union negotiations also happen at the end of 2020. So so this is a shorter version of the implementation plan, but there's some really big things on it.
What you're calling that's ongoing, yellow?
Those are things that I was, we were thinking maybe they should come out. But the, and I didn't know for the board advocacy and involvement, board engagement, I just kind of highlighted that so that I could ask Maladi to and her committee what they think they might want to have in there.
Is it okay if we get back to you?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
On this, yeah.
Hope everybody will read that carefully in advance of our next meeting. If they have any questions, send it to Amy. Get those resolved. Maybe if you, whatever questions you get, maybe if you could send out an email and let us know just so, okay, somebody else might have been thinking the same thing and hadn't asked or just to let, you know, figure an idea that somebody does.
Will you send this electronic?
I was going to ask someone, sure, happy to.
Moving on. Next item on our new business is motion to approve using $50,000 of the library levy reserve for the library air handler replacement project. That was the subject of the email that Amy sent out about the difference in the estimated costs between the engineer and the city engineer?
Yeah, I think I only sent it to you. I think I managed to not send it to you. So for some background, the current year budget in the capital improvement program provided for, I think it was $470,000 for replacement of the last two air handlers here at the main library. So there's still original equipment. So we did three this year or last year, and we wanted to do three of them this year, or two to finish it off this year. The engineering firm that was putting together the plans and specs for that prior to going out for bid, of course, they do a cost estimate because we want to make sure that as we bid it, there's, you know, we have an accurate estimate so that we know that we have the funding for it. Their estimate came in about $200,000 higher than that. So the city's CIP manager, well, first of all, the city really wants to get this project done this year. They don't want to delay it out. They know that our one air handler didn't work this past summer and we ended up moving staff out of areas so that it blowing a lot of fans. So they have, you know, through other CIP funds that, you know, were not expended on schedule, they've pretty much been able to fund it with the exception of about $50,000. So I suggested to them that we could pull that from the library levy reserve so that we could have that done. I asked Brandon Wright, the chief financial officer for the city. He indicated that right now our balance is $937,000 in that account. The board has previously approved $250,000 to be spent as part of the library renovation project. So taking that into account and then the additional $50,000 for the air handler replacement, that would leave the balance at $637,000. And he feels that an amount between $300,000 and $400,000 is where we should have our goal to keep that amount. So he feels comfortable with that expenditure from that account and, you know, with the remaining fund balance that will be there, so.
Just knowing their big, like, it's about to fall apart like the road for the air conditioner.
Shh, quiet, don't say anything. And then that's really why I think he wants that $300,000 to $400,000 cushion in there is to cover those kinds of things. So if, you know, if something drastic would happen, then maybe we would need that.
But you'd still be at about 600, did you say?
Yeah, we'd still be well over the amount that they, I don't think. Below which he thinks we shouldn't go. So to me, this is kind of what that money is there for. We really want to get this project done. And we, I would really like to get it done, you know, kind of before we do a lot of the renovation. Because, you know, is there, you know, cutting things out and taking things up and down stairwells? I mean, but there's a lot of wear and tear in the hallways and the paint and all that. It would be nice if we were to get this done and we get the renovation done and we could, you know, paint those hallways and, you know, get all the dirt and grime out of them that's, you know, been getting onto those walls and can just have it done, so.
Do you want a motion? Yes, I know that we approve using $500,000 of library.
All these numbers you've been throwing around. $50,000, what's that?
What's a zero?
I lose my mind. $50,000 of library levy reserve for library air handler replacement project.
Second, thank you, Sylvia. Thank you, Tom. We have a motion in a second to approve using $50,000 of library levy reserve for the library air handler replacement project. Is there any further discussion? A hearing none? Call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the $50,000 of library levy reserve for the library air handler replacement project? Can add in the file by saying aye. Anyone to vote? Thank you, motion here.
Mr. Vasquez, what's the lifespan of these air cleaners?
Well, I don't know about the new ones. I mean, the ones we're replacing are original equipment, so 50 years.
Wow, that's amazing.
The new ones probably long.
Original equipment? That's impressive.
It's just all duct tape.
You blow on it, it's done.
We recently purchased some new kitchen appliances and when the guys were delivering, they're bringing in the stove and they're taking out the old one. And I said, gee, that would last us for like 17 or 18 years. And he said, these two guys looked at each other and says, this one's never going to last that long.
I think the same thing, exact same.
We had a dishwasher that was 38 years old that still worked.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Never had a repair.
It's one of that basic, right?
Starting DIY projects using the old.
It could be a board project.
It's going to come out in pieces because I'll have to.
And art could be made from it.
Exactly, exactly.
Public art.
Public art feature with city involved.
Okay, whatever.
Amy's not feeling well today. Which is understandable.
Moving on to old business, discussion of the updated bylaws for the library board trustees. Sent you a red line document of that.
Mine didn't show up with any red lines, so.
Or did?
No. So I just had to. I have the.
What was wrong with my thing?
It was crazy.
It's my home.
I guess you sent, I was a sent.
Yeah, I don't think those got in the packet.
No, I, no, they came to us. For some reason, I had this.
I guess the only thing I would say that would change from what I sent out was that the dates I put in at the end for the, whether various sections were modified, I had today's date and that would be updated. Other than that, I guess maybe just run through them quick since there are a few minutes. And the first article in section one just changed the library, which was the place where our meetings would be held, to a library since we have three now. And under the role of the secretary, added or designate me where it talked about keeping the minutes of meetings. And then also deleted the section preserving all bills and vouchers because the actual processing and payment of those is done by the city here. Page four, deleted the date of adoption for the original bylaws since, just to move that back. Because actually, there was a place for signature too there, which hasn't been during several changes. But move that date of adoption back to the section that actually has the list of changes. Fit better there. And then deleted Article Four. This is something we hadn't talked about before, but it seemed fitting. That section talks about back when the library board of trustees were considered to be trustees for life, or as long as they wanted to be. Probably, I mean, even going back, that's probably not, you know, consistent with the law or city ordinance. And so back in 2003, a decision was made that they should not, not do that any longer, that they should be, they should be turned over on the board. And so that section was added that in part included that if they would consider those people who had been considered trustees for life, make them trustees emeritus and allow them to, if they wanted to, continue to receive the minutes and things like that. And that they would also, they could attend meetings, which, you know, any member of the public could, that they would be allowed to attend as ex officio members of the board. So anyway, at this time, I guess in talking with Amy, we're not aware that any of those original trustees who were considered to be trustees for life or even living anymore. So it seemed that we could take that out. And I did, however, leave the title and section in there and identify it as deleted just so it would know that there was something there if anybody wanted to go back and do that and also not, you know, use that article again, I guess. And just pointed out that if you were to look in the Iowa code, that's how they handle it. When they repeal a section, they leave the title there and then put repealed after it just so there's a trail back, you know, if you wanted to follow back to what was there originally. And oh, and then in Article Six, deleted amendment from the title to avoid any confusion with Article Six, which was relating to the amendment of the bylaws, and changed the title just to be, just a formatting thing, changed the title to uppercase so it'd be consistent with the rest of the document. So anyway, those are the changes. And I guess with, if there are any questions there are about that or anything, comments? I think the rest of the things were all things that I had mentioned before as possible changes and the executive committee had looked at those.
I did learn something, though, that the secretary is supposed to report to the mayor if somebody doesn't show up for six months.
Yeah.
Didn't know that was my job. Didn't do it either, by the way. Didn't execute on that. So dereliction of duty.
I want to say thank you, Steve, for putting all this stuff together. Because I know we did have one meeting, two meetings about this and a lot of work.
Good job.
Put this together.
Steve, this is very, this is very silly, but if it's okay to, the first section one, the last sentence, reasonable notice of any meaning must be given to each trustee. I think just a two needs to be added, that's it.
Oh, okay.
Just, I mean, it's very silly, but I just wanted.
I'm calling you for details. No, I appreciate it.
And this is just a question out of curiosity and I'm not sure. So when we mention that, you know, we do have a mention in this where we say Iowa code such and such, you know, we give those points. Is it, is it, is it necessary for us to give a link? Because this goes on our website, correct? You know, on the DHL website, right? Is it necessary then to give, you know, as, you know, pop up windows?
We certainly could put a link in into that.
So it's like informing the public what it means. If the question arises, they can quickly see the answer, just to try.
I expect that, those words in blue.
Exactly, exactly. So that becomes a pop-up link within the page itself. Thank you.
Good idea, thank you. Okay, so what I will do then is pass this on to Casey to send out as a final, roll in the red line things and update those dates. Get it due for next meeting for approval.
Is this, is this something that we should run by city legal? Or have an attorney look at the bylaws, make sure we're not? I mean, I don't think we're missing anything, but.
We certainly can, I can.
I'm just asking the question. I don't know. I don't know if we have to, but just an idea.
Throw it on.
Yeah, I'd say I don't think there are any real major changes that can be consistent with the state or the code or the city ordinance. But I certainly can send that to them.
You may also recall in regard to this that when I was showing you just some things that other boards and I that other boards in Iowa, boards of trustees had included in their bylaws, the, they recall the Cedar Rapids Board of Trustees bylaws, talked extensively about their, their insurance coverage and all these things that were covered, you know, people were covered and when they went off the board, they were covered and, you know, for something that happened while they were on the board and things like that. And I talked with.
Kim Forsyth?
Kim Forsyth, yes, thank you, who's the city risk manager. And he said, he said, yeah, we're covered. He said, unless we commit a crime.
Then we're not.
Then we're not.
Like a crime as a group?
That's going on.
This is my man.
Watch your step. Okay. So, okay, that then, we'll bring that back for approval next month. And I guess last item on the agenda is to adjourn.
Can I add one thing? I'm sorry. In the, I wanted to say this at the beginning, the, the next draft of the new historic district came yesterday from the consultants, a draft version, which includes this building and it's practically the rest of downtown. It goes all the way to Scott, to Western, including the old Hawk building there. So it's a, it's a tremendous amount of property in downtown Davenport, but the library is the ground, sort of the, well, it goes all the way over to the, to the.
The opera, the music, what is it?
The Suzy, the Suzy building. But, and so includes buildings that were already listed individually, that had been listed for various reasons in a district, and I think it's called a central business district, historic district, or central business historic district or something. So that's kind of exciting. And that's, it takes then more time to have it done, it'll probably take another half year, but you'd like to hear more of that. And our, our building is there.
Nice.
One question in regard to the 100% design plans meeting, would you like it? Thursday, is that open and board members would like to attend?
Sure, sure.
So I guess just to be aware of that, that was in Amy's report, that is there time?
It's at 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock.
7 o'clock in my office.
Who's name, what do you remember?
Rob Robel. Are you familiar with him?
Not as well as Mark.
Oh. I have not met him, so, yeah.
Sorry, before we, before we go, can I quickly say something? I spoke to Bill, Bill Fur, and the caucus for, you know, if we have anybody young in our family who's going to caucus for the first time, two dates, December 11th and I think January 11th or 15th, I'm not sure, but it's up there on the web, on Facebook. And they, they had a fantastic job, the first time they did, the two more that they're doing it. And when I spoke to him, he said they're purposely doing it a little bit late so high school students can come. And we've talked about it in school district and I'm going to talk about it this evening when I go as well, Craig, this evening, so local improvement, I think. So I will be talking about it. So it is fantastic and kids attended and I think there's an interest. So just wanted to throw it out. I didn't go, but I'm going to go for the January one, so.
Thank you. Call for a motion to adjourn.
Some will.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have motion in second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yeah, I've been in the house this evening.